Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll declare the agenda approved. Announcements, announcements from members of council, anything upcoming? We have the town's birthday on Wednesday. I was going to say weather permitting, but it is still the town's birthday whether it snows or it doesn't snow. We'll have to keep the public posted on any events that may have to be adjusted because of that, because of the storm that apparently is coming. And there is a town hall style breakfast at the Bridgewater Area Chamber of Commerce is putting on Wednesday morning with Mayor Bullock Getson and I both speaking. That's Wednesday morning, but they will make an announcement tomorrow if that is to be postponed due to weather. And we should probably let people know in case they don't know that there is a storm coming and it's supposed to have some ice with it, so just be cautious and listen to regular forecasts and adjust your commute accordingly. I do want to highlight the lobster crawl event that happened at the LCLC as part of the overall lobster crawl festival that's been going on around the province, or around the south shore rather, and just commend the organizers and participants and vendors of that event. There were 300-plus people that took part in the event at the LCLC on Saturday night. I would have said it was a huge success because all the people I talked to had a great time. Counselor Graves and I were fortunate enough to have an individual from St. John actually actively seek us out to let us know that he drove all the way from St. John for this event, to come to our community and spend money in our community, and he had a great time. But it kind of highlights the draw of events like this as well as the facility and a number of people from the city as well came and stayed overnight and enjoyed our town and in fact all of the Lumberdale County. So that's what we want from these events, so that in itself makes it a huge success, so congratulations to them. Any other announcements, Counselor McDonald?
Just to mention again the Heart Disease Awareness Day. We heard about it from some presenters here a couple weeks ago at the Bridgewater Superstore on the 13th at four o'clock.
Right, yes, thank you. And should remind everyone the bus is free on the 13th, so ride the bus.
Yeah, just announcing that the free skate that was, has been rescheduled for Friday evening at, I believe it's at five to six fifteen, so that's the town's birthday celebration skate will be this Friday, the 15th, so hope to see you there.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else?
Museum.
Counselor Thorburn, yes, thank you.
Engage and Explore Series at the Desrosay Museum are on Saturdays from two to four. This week is Seedy Saturday, so Helping Nature Heal I think is going to be there and helping set that up for that day. On the 23rd is the Ukulele Jam, March the 2nd pop-up cards, and on March the 9th model ship building, something to do every Saturday at the museum.
Perfect.
Admission is free.
Yes, I was just going to say a reminder to the public that there is no charge for admission. It's by donation as you feel appropriate. Yeah, and I took in the machine display, so anyone who hasn't seen the machine at the Desrosay should go and check that out. It's one of those things where you just, you get kind of mesmerized by it. Have you seen it, Counselor McGinnis? So it's, just the way it works and the way it sounds, you could sit there probably for an hour just watching it, but it reminded me of a Spirograph, so it's got a pen and a giant piece of paper and they set it and it just kind of draws and makes art, and the art is impressive in itself, but just kind of watching it, it's almost therapeutic, so I would highly recommend it, you know, on your lunch hour or something, go and check that out. Anything else, members of council? Okay, thank you. We'll skip right down to delegations, then we're a little early, but I think our delegations are here. So we have representatives from the Western Regional Housing Authority to give us an overview of the programs they have on. If you want to come on down and introduce yourself and see your presentation is all geared up.
Thank you. I'm John Campbell, I'm the Director for Western Regional Housing Authority. I'd also like to introduce Peter Simpson who's with me tonight. He's the Chair of the Western Regional Housing Authority. So I have a pretty brief presentation that basically gives a high-level overview of what Western Regional Housing Authority is involved in, also what we're not involved in, and a little bit of background on Housing Nova Scotia and some of the programs that they're involved in. Sure how I forward the slides here. Arrow, oh, here we go, yeah. So as I said, give a little bit of a high-level overview of Housing Nova Scotia, talk specifically about public housing, which is really the mandate that housing authorities are involved in, share a little bit about the board and board membership, give some specifics on Western Regional Housing Authority and specifically some of the facilities that we have here in the town of Bridgewater, and kind of close out with a pretty high-level explanation on how municipal cost sharing works. Generally, in my experience in these presentations to council, that's usually a pretty high-level or important topic to discuss. So Housing Nova Scotia's government agency administers public housing in the province. It falls under Department of Community Services, and probably the biggest, or probably one of the biggest parts of its mandate is providing funding to five regional housing authorities throughout the province, and the housing authorities themselves manage the public housing program. Other programs that Housing Nova Scotia administers would include shelter enhancement, partnerships for construction of affordable housing projects, the rent supplement program, which has been growing quite a bit in the last few, last few years, down payment assistance for first-time home buyers, and financial assistance and grants for repairs for current homeowners. So those are all programs that Housing Nova Scotia manages, that us as the Western Regional Housing Authority are not really involved in, other than we oversee the rent supplement program. So public housing, I think most probably have an idea of what it is, but it was established in Canada probably about 50, 60 years ago to provide safe, affordable rental housing, you know, for eligible low-income families, seniors, and persons with disabilities. By lar, the largest component of our tenants or clients are seniors, they make up about 80% of the people that are housed in our units. Tenants will pay a monthly rent based on what they can afford compared against their gross household income. Seniors pay roughly 30% of what their gross monthly income is, families pay approximately All of our units are fully serviced and equipped with all the things that you would see in any standard apartment or home. We do have a few units that are barrier-free and fully accessible. However, I will say that most of the public housing stock was built in the mid-'70s, 1970s, where the definition of accessibility was very different than what you would see now. So we do, we do have a lot of challenges, especially in our seniors' buildings, with providing what we would consider in 2019 to be an accessible unit. So as a housing authority, our mandate is to maintain the properties and housing units. We, in essence, are the superintendent. Housing Nova Scotia would be the landlord, they own the public housing stock, and we really act as a superintendent. So maintain the properties, determine eligibility, so managing the waitlist. We have staff who verify the income of all of our applicants and calculate the rents and then review those on an annual basis or as there are changes to incomes. And as I mentioned earlier, we administer the rent supplement agreements with private landlords. And as I said, that is where we're seeing more growth in access to public housing. The province is not building new public housing stock. Most of our, most of our units were built 40, 50 years ago. I don't know when the last time the province actually funded the construction of a new public housing building or unit. So we're looking more at partnerships, you know, with private landlords, co-ops, not-for-profit agencies that have apartment buildings. So each, each of the five housing authorities has a board. I will, I will stress that these are not governing boards, they're advisory boards that are primarily responsible for tenant issues. The biggest, probably the biggest responsibility is the actual approval of our applicants for access into, into the housing units. They're also involved in complaints or concerns that come from our tenants and can be involved in the appeal of certain situations where there's a disagreement with a decision that was made. Western Regional Housing Authority has 27, there's 27 municipalities that are in our region, we span across eight counties. Each house, or each municipality is eligible to nominate a representative on the board. That nomination then goes through a review and approval process with Department of Community Services. So we currently have 20 municipal representatives on our board, there are seven vacancies. One of those vacancies is with the town of Bridgewater. So we would certainly, I would certainly encourage, and I know Peter would as well, to give some consideration to nominating someone to serve on the board. The board terms are for three years and they can be renewed up to three terms. We also have three provincial representatives, so they're not there to represent a municipality, they're appointed directly by the Minister of Community Services. And we have space for two tenant representatives. We currently have two nominees that are going through that review process with Department of Community Services. So the majority of the work of the board, with a board, you know, that could be upwards of 35, 36 members, quite cumbersome for them to conduct business in a group that size. So we've divided the board into four standing committees, basically along geographic regions that meet regularly throughout the year, and that's where you see the work of the board being done, where they're reviewing applicants and approving admission into our units. We do have an annual general meeting of the board each fall, which would be the only time during the year that the full board meets. So as I said, Western, Western Regional Housing Authority is probably the largest in terms of land coverage of the five, of the five housing authorities in Nova Scotia, probably in around the middle in terms of the number of housing units. We have just, just over 2,500 public housing units and administer close to 600 rent supplements. Here in Bridgewater, we have 124 seniors' units that are comprised in four buildings. We have 11 family units here in the town of Bridgewater. And current, currently the applications on file, so this would be the waitlist, 25 families in Bridgewater, 82 seniors, and 33 non-elderly applicants. So a lot of, a lot of applications, especially you look at the seniors, 82 is about two-thirds of the units that are, that are available and currently occupied in the town. So municipal cost sharing, just to kind of, kind of go over how that, how that is, how that works really. The building, most of the buildings, most of the public housing stock was actually built by municipalities in the '70s, and then in partnership with the province, the ownership was handed over to the province, and with it, there were agreements that were put in place, they're actually called handover agreements, that establish the rate of cost sharing that each municipality would be required to fund the province on an annual basis. The buildings do not make money, we, we, each, each building kind of has a, would have an operating loss for the year, just because they're subsidized, they're not market rent buildings. So we, we calculate the operating loss by building using pretty straightforward financial statements, just summarizing rental revenues against direct, indirect, and capital expenses for each property. The sharing agreement, cost sharing agreements vary by municipality and building, but however in Bridgewater, it's, it's a standard 12.5% that, that is shared. Generally, the buildings from a, annual operating costs are pretty steady. Where you can see that cost fluctuate is when capital projects have been approved in a given year, and so part of the capital costs are applied against the cost sharing percentages as well. So capital, that's really a big part of our, of our maintenance. Like I said, these are, these buildings are by and large 50 years old, in a lot of cases they're kind of in the third generation of major capital repairs. So, but that, the decision for what is, what is approved for capital projects or capital repairs lies with Housing Nova Scotia, it's not a decision that's made by the housing authority, so. That's it. Certainly be interested if you had any questions.
Questions from councilors. Deputy Mayor Tanner.
So I'm curious why Housing Nova Scotia would be the decision-maker on those capital improvements when the Western Housing Authorities would be more local and more familiar with the properties they're dealing with and so on? How does, how does that dynamic work, I guess?
It's done certainly in conjunction with us, but there is a engineering department within Housing Nova Scotia, so there, you know, you've got architects and engineers. Certainly if we see something, we would be working with them, but they're, they're constantly doing building assessments across the province and, you know, have 10-year capital plans, so.
Okay. Good question. Counselor Graves.
So for the Nova Scotia Accessibility Act, how does that going to affect public housing? Does that have any effect on public housing?
I, that's a good question. I don't, I'd have to, I'd have to look at that. I'm not aware of what effect.
Because if these 124 senior units and 11 family units aren't accessible, then something's going to have, have to happen, I would imagine, to make them accessible?
I'm not aware of what, of any kind of relationship or, I guess, impact that the Nova Scotia Accessibility Act has on our units.
Okay.
I could certainly look into that.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yep, and respond, yep.
Also, in terms of family units, there aren't that many family units. How do you get more family units, affordable housing family?
Mostly what you're seeing is, is the rent supplement program is being used for family units.
Okay.
Again, the province is not building more housing stock.
No, but encouraging landlords or builders to build.
Oh, there's certainly all kinds of programs on the, on the Housing Nova Scotia side, in terms of, I mean, with the National Housing Strategy that came out in fall of 2017, there are programs that, that municipalities can get involved in. It's kind of a, it's, it's a partnership agreement. I don't, again, it's not a, it's not an area that the housing authority is directly involved in, it's a program from the, from the Housing Nova Scotia side. So, but, but certainly there are opportunities and access to funds through the National Housing Strategy and Housing Nova Scotia for the creation of new affordable housing projects.
You probably asked that question, Counselor Graves, because every time we have a developer come, it's always for senior friendly units and not.
What, family units?
Yeah, but most of it's, we seem to always ask the same question to developers, how come there's not more family units? You seem to always want to, and I understand there's a long waiting list for seniors, but the struggle seems to be to get them to build more family units, there all seem to be one-bedroom units.
Good quality family units.
Yeah.
High child poverty rate in Nova Scotia and a higher poverty rate in, for child poverty in the town of Bridgewater.
Yeah, yeah, it's interesting, your point, but our experience with, with rental units, especially outside of metropolitan Halifax, is, is there's a very limited amount of one-bedroom units. So, so we run into challenges with the rent supplement program, especially more for seniors, I guess, than, as opposed to families, because most developers in smaller towns in Nova Scotia are building their apartments with two, three-bedroom units, not one-bedrooms.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Counselor Thorburn.
You did answer a couple of my questions, but I got a couple more. It seems like you have a lot, a long waitlist for people, and what is the average wait time, the time you apply till you actually get into one of those units?
Varies by region, but in a senior, I mean, and I'm just going to kind of give an educated guess, but a senior in Bridgewater waiting for a unit could be well over a year to gain access to a unit. Now, there are priority access standards, there are a number of things that we would look at, given certain circumstances, present them to the board to make a decision on whether we grant somebody priority access, but if they kind of just tick all the boxes of a normal, standard applicant, it would certainly be at least a year, if not longer, in the Bridgewater area.
With that in mind, and the number of people wanting affordable housing or reasonable housing, it would make sense to me that the housing authorities should look at building more units. If the demand's that high that you have to wait over a year, something's wrong with this exit.
I couldn't agree, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a challenge that governments face in, in all kinds of different sectors. I mean, the waiting list for nursing homes is, is, is growing exponentially, but they're not building new nursing homes, you know, it's, but.
All it takes is money.
Yeah.
Further questions, Counselor Graves?
I'm just thinking in regards to housing, specifically seniors, and it's expensive for rent subsidies, that kind of stuff, do you ever think of other things like co-living as an example, like promoting co-living and expanding on co-living? So co-living would be where two seniors are living in separate homes and moving them in together to provide that they're compatible, and then there would only be one internet bill as opposed to two, there'd only be one heat bill as opposed to two, and all the expenses would be cut in half, and then in terms of social isolation, these people have friends or they have a new friend, so is that, is that worse, is that, would that come from your department, the promoter, or the study? Because we certainly talked about it at Shaq, but to have a larger government body with a lot of resources, human resources and technical skills, that seems to me that it might be a way to solve some of the housing crisis in Nova Scotia, particularly among seniors or even young moms as an example. You get two single, two single moms, if you can move them in together, then they can share childcare, and there's a whole bunch of synergies, like positive synergies, that ever come up?
I mean, I think it's a concept that is growing, and certainly in other jurisdictions. I'm aware of co-living arrangements. In the year that I've been in this role, there hasn't been a lot of discussion, but again, I would, I would expect that the grassroots of that would happen on the Housing Nova Scotia side as opposed to the Housing Authority. I mean, back, back to kind of our mandate is manage the buildings, manage the waitlist, you know, and, and review, you know, review applications to.
But in regards to the waitlist, you know, if you could, if you had that conversation with Housing Nova Scotia, if you could reduce that waitlist, then that's a good thing, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, might be worth a discussion.
Sure, yeah.
Any other members of council? No, great, thank you for your presentation.
Great, thanks for having me.
Our next delegation is Angela Clifton and David Walker from Bridgewater United Church. Set up the technology, there you go.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Angela Clifton and I'm the Pastoral Care Coordinator at Bridgewater United Church, and I'm joined by David Walker. I think most of you know David. Together we represent both Bridgewater United Church and the Bridgewater Interchurch Council, who both, who both support this request for a scatter garden. So we're asking Bridgewater Town Council to direct the Bridgewater Cemetery, Brookside Cemetery, to create a small scatter garden on their premises. Have you thought about how and where you want to spend your time after you die? There are many options, one of them being create cremation. As it is now, your cremated remains or ashes can be buried in an urn or can be placed in the ground, either marked by a headstone or placed in a columbaria. You can see a columbaria at the back of that picture. Or they can be scattered on public or private land or at sea. Many cemeteries are now offering a space where those cremains, as they are known, usually a couple of palms of calcium phosphate and other trace minerals, can be scattered or directly buried in a designated garden known as a scatter garden. Statistics reveal that almost half the people are opting for cremation now, and additionally, many cemeteries are running out of space for a full casket burial. Scattering remains is not illegal, but there are some guidelines that need to be respected. For example, not on private property or near potable water. Many ashes are already scattered in public parks or rivers or in the ocean, as people have no other option. These are not ideal, as those who remain behind are unable to go back and have a quiet time of reflection and of remembering. People visiting a public park might be put off to discover a pile of cremains along their favorite path. A dedicated scatter garden in an established cemetery would provide a dignified and respectful place for a family member to place their loved one, and this space would lend itself to a traditional committal service and would provide space for the family and friends to return as they wish to remember and reflect on their loved one. Practically, a scatter garden can be any size. It's often in a quiet corner of a cemetery, it might have trees, flowers, shrubs, rocks, it might have a water feature. Most often it has a bench. The plants need to be able to withstand a higher alkaline soil, although we do have acid rain on our side. A record of those placed there could be maintained in a central registry. I recently attended a presentation on energy poverty and the wonderful work that the town of Bridgewater is doing to address this pressing issue. The Canadian Council of Churches recently released a report called Healing Poverty, wherein it, they stated that one in seven Canadians live in poverty. While I would not want a scatter garden to be known as an inexpensive option for burial, the reality is that burying a loved one is often a financial hardship for many. A scatter garden would significantly, significantly reduce the cost of a traditional burial while providing the opportunity for a dignified and respectful ceremony. A ceremony and a place that would provide comfort to the bereaved, and also in a beautiful There are numerous advantages to a scatter garden, they are environmentally friendly, aesthetic, dignified, economic, easy to maintain. aesthetic, dignified, economic, easy to maintain, take less space than a traditional burial. I read with interest a letter to the editor of the Progress Bulletin recently, that's where a man went to bury his mother in Brookside Cemetery, traditional full casket burial, and he was unable to do so because there was no room, even though he had purchased that plot a long time ago. They just couldn't fit the casket into the, the spot that was buried, that was designated. And, and advantages, it prevents inappropriate scattering elsewhere. Disadvantages, this, this option would not be for everyone, of course, but then neither is traditional burial or traditional cremation. It's hard to estimate the initial startup costs of a scatter garden, it's dependent on size, configuration, and attributes. I'm asking for a small, simple garden, a suitable space may already exist, it just would need to be redesignated. It could be created through fundraising or a memorial donation, and I would recommend that a nominal fee be charged for placing a loved one in a scatter garden, and that fee would be for ongoing maintenance. Lastly, I would be willing to sit on a planning committee, but you'd have to recognize that I have no expertise in either cemeteries or landscaping. So David and I would like to thank you tonight, and for your continued thoughtful reflection on us creating a scatter garden at Brookside Cemetery. Are there any questions?
Questions from members of council. And before you ask the question about the person who didn't have space at Brookside Cemetery, it was actually Chester.
Okay.
I read that same letter to the editor, and it was the first thing I asked the staff, so that...
My mistake.
Yeah, but they, in the letter, they didn't specify, and it was in the newspaper in town, so I had the same thought, just so everyone knows, that was in Chester.
My mistake.
But it is an issue, for sure, of lack of space.
I'm just curious if anyone recalls how much we have in that reserve for Brookside Cemetery? There's still a reserve amount? Maybe we, maybe we get that circulated?
We'll get that, Maria. Any other questions from members of council?
I think it's a great idea.
It's a great idea.
Well, thank you for that.
No, it isn't, awesome.
Provides another option for people.
Absolutely. So we'll, council will discuss and, and probably seek some input from staff, and find out what we have in the reserve, and, and get some more information.
We do have a bylaw that can be amended as well, to provide for a scatter garden. It now provides for the lots and the method of, of cremating the remains and, of course, yeah, so we could, if council wanted, that could prepare a report on what that program would look like, and just providing that service there, and what amendments would be required to your bylaw to do that.
And again, I would be willing to sit on a planning committee, if needed.
And, and this is obviously something that's happening in other jurisdictions, so any information that, even if you could provide it to us, so that we can, no sense reinventing the wheel, if other communities have had to redo their bylaws and change their policies to allow that, it's always easier to use the examples that other communities have, have put forward. Any other questions from members of council? Right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to come forward as a delegation? Any other members of public? No? All right, our next item is, our next item is the minutes from January 28th, 2019. Any errors, omissions, anything from council? If we're hearing none, we'll declare the minutes approved. Going down to correspondence for action, we have an item from Gary Ramey, he has the Facade Society, as you know, he went down the path of being approved for improvements to his building for an awning, and so council needs to make a decision on what happens with that, because the, the time ran out on his application, and I, so it now kind of sits in limbo, the work has been done, as I understand it, or it's almost done.
The awning's not erected, but it's got part orders.
It's almost ready to go, but we need to figure out if we put this application back in the queue or approve it, so is there a, did you wanna elaborate on that?
Sure, so upon review, the, the Facade Society approved Mr. Ramey's application back in 2017, and the program guidelines state that the funds, the, the work must be completed by the end of the fiscal year in which it was approved. So the funds, the work was to be completed by the end of, of March 2018, so nearly a year ago. However, the, the society sort of, as you know, wound down last year, and upon the, the winding down, also recognized they had a number of items in the queue, the work hadn't been fully completed, and so they revoked his approval, which was upsetting to Mr. Ramey because he'd finally gotten work finally completed. He had struggled all along, he, I've had a, a long meeting with him, and I was aware of some of the issues early on in his process, and then it was quite quiet for some time. So we reviewed all the correspondence we could find, from the society, from ourselves, and recognized that it wasn't clear, it wasn't made clear to Mr. Ramey about the timeframe. It was in the program application, but it wasn't reiterated until he got the letter of revocation that it had expired. So we consider this sort of a unique circumstance, and that's why we have made a recommendation that if, if we were to allocate funding, we would find it outside of the facade program funding, because those funds are all committed to new projects, that are all on track to be completed by the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, so the request is for $5,000, which is the amount that he was approved for, that's the maximum amount that...
Yes, that is the maximum amount of a matching grant, excluding HSD.
Would you like to have a motion?
I would, then we can have a discussion.
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater, direct the planning department to allocate funding in the amount of $5,000 for the exterior renovations to, at 620-624 King Street, upon completion of the project, conditional on such funding being found outside of the commitments made by the Facade Society for the 2018-2019 fiscal year, and on the completion being on or before March 31st, 2019.
Second your please, seconded by Counsel for sheer discussion.
Just briefly, I think, I don't think we have any, any choice, I think it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, I agree. Counsel Graves?
I also think it's the right thing to do, but part of it is painting, is it not?
Part of the original application was painting, however, the cost of the awning repair work, there was more cost than is, than anticipated when the original application was made, and so he had to have the actual structure for the awning repaired, in addition to a new awning to be created. So this 5,000 is only for the awning work, as per the, the receipts and invoices that you see in the documentation, so it, it adds up.
Okay, because he wouldn't be able to finish painting.
No, he would have to apply with, with all the rest of, of anybody else, so for a new application in the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. Contingent upon any funding provided to the program.
Great, thank you. I'm, I'm going to support the motion, because I, I think we didn't communicate as well as, or the Facade Society didn't communicate as, as well as it could have. I do wanna say, I find it, there's a little bit of responsibility on the applicant. For a project that is now two years in the making, is an unrealistic amount of time to assume that you can be kind of in the queue for that long, do you know what I mean? If you apply for something, usually the window was a year, or less, and so I think, in this case, communication both ways could have been approved, and, and when I hear that, you know, it was silent for a while, there could have been updates also from the applicant, but I think the onus is on us to, in my opinion, to approve this, because we didn't, didn't state otherwise during the process, so, and we will make sure we don't do that again. Ready for the question?
Question.
Question's being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Now, down to reports and recommendations, financing mechanisms for energy.
Hey, everyone, thanks for having me here. I'm Greg, Greg Guco, I'm the Energy Finance and Development Coordinator for the town of Bridgewater, and I'm gonna be presenting the Community Energy Financing Systems Scoping Study in PowerPoint form. So first, just to begin, I would like to acknowledge that we are on the ancestral and seated territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and this report was funded by various supporters, the Government of Canada, FCM, and Nova Scotia, and has been reviewed internally and externally by a group with a diverse background and a wealth of experience, and they are all listed here. Moving on to the purpose of this report, so the purpose of this report is to assess financing mechanisms to capitalize clean energy projects, ultimately curbing the town's energy dependency. So as the world transitions to a clean energy economy, and technology catches up with social demand, financing structures, ownership models, and contract types are evolving to support the carbon mitigating initiatives. So the scoping study reports analyzes emerging and traditional financing tools and structures to narrow down options that best suit the funding needs, as outlined in the Town of Bridgewater's CEIP, that's the Community Energy Investment Plan, and the Smart Cities Challenge. So what combination of these financing mechanisms provide the best value to the town? So a laundry list of mechanisms were explored, the initial list of mechanisms was pieced together through extensive research and through liaising with industry experts. We analyzed these financing mechanisms at a very high level, through a variety of different lenses, so the financing principles, so interest rate, expected return, amortization, and how that affects the cost to the cost of service to the end user. Community benefits, so to ensure that the financing mechanisms that we select promotes community benefits, you know, stimulate the local economy, community empowerment, and, and things along those lines. Applicability, so does the mechanism have a history to support projects X, Y, Z? So essentially, this is evidence-based de-risking. Legislation, so is there existing provincial legislation to support the mechanism? What kind of barriers exist, if any? So identify these at the onset, to define hurdles and eliminate options right off the bat. So some legislative barriers that, that, you know, we've noticed were that a municipality has to own 100% of the projects that it finances, and there are borrowing restrictions to the municipal finance corporation, the MFC, which is capped by debt service, service coverage ratio. So it's important to remember why, you know, this is so important. Currently, over $80 million a year leaves the Bridgewater economy through the purchase of energy resources, so we would like to curb that. So just to go through some background, before leading up to the actual analysis, this is pulled directly from the CEIP, which, which shows what the goal is. The goal here is to raise $374 million in community infrastructure without burdening the tax base. So the following slide is the cost model, so we see here that most costs have a return on investment, which is very important if we're to attract investing proponents, so that's the takeaway message there. And then the cost of capitalization by source, the takeaway here that is that we created these stacks, and municipal funding is a very, very minute component of the overall stacking So we speak a lot about the CEIP and Smart Cities Challenge, a core component of both, both initiatives is the development of innovative capitalization strategies to bring millions of dollars to, to the community, to upgrade community infrastructure, improve housing stock, and create better and more affordable transportation options. So the list that we see here, sorry, it's once small, is, these are the projects that, that the money will essentially be used for. The takeaway is that there is extensive overlap between the CEIP and the Smart Cities Challenge, with the Smart Cities Challenge being a subsection of the CEIP, focusing on those most in need of energy and mobility improvements. So to wrap up the background, we'll briefly review the three phases of implementing a capitalization strategy. So the first phase is why we're, why I'm here today, is to present the Energy Finance and Ownership Structures Background Research and Scoping Study. Again, lay all the financing mechanism cards on the table, create ownership, financing vehicle, and contract-type stacks by project type, then highlighting cornerstone pieces for each, and recommending that these proceed to a detailed operational study, Phase Two. So it's important to note that through Phase One analysis, a municipal utility jumped out as a cornerstone mechanism. A municipal utility may decentralize electricity disbursement, streamlining the selling of buying and selling of electricity to local stakeholders, and could mitigate the dependency on local energy markets, if based on renewables. We'd be able to set optimized electricity tariffs, which would positively impact the rate of return. So as a result, we actually pieced together a utilities backrounder, which was attached to the scoping study as an appendix, where we examined things like the Town of Bridgewater utility history and utility-like services, looked at legislation, energy utility ownership models, possible integration with broadband utility services, which led us to this clustering opportunity, which is the idea of combining different, different utility services to optimize operations through interconnectivity. This streamlines operations while generating additional sources of revenue, or decreases, decreasing existing utility costs. Extensive pace research was, was also put into the report, a lot of the research was already done by the Sustainable Alternatives Consulting Group, and was later refined by Clean, so that was incorporated into the study as well. And then that would lead us to Phase Two, Detailed Operational Study. This is the Detailed Operational Study of components defined in Phase One, including a feasibility study carried out through an RFP. Stakeholder consultation will continue, so consulting with platform developers, trustees, residents, marketing firms, energy service companies, and so forth, and then finally to seek approval from council, council to move to Phase Three of the study, which is the Ownership Structure Implementation, where we construct detailed business plan, and incorporate only, ownership entities, and execute on agreements. So that's the background. Moving on to the analysis and findings of the actual report itself, so 27 mechanisms were qualitatively scored, based on applicability, which is things like scale, risk, and history, role, which is operations, perception, governance, and connectivity to other financing mechanisms, legislation, and financing principles, such as amortization rate, interest rate, and, and so forth. So based on this analysis, we categorized the mechanisms into three categories, a fit, a potential fit, or an unlikely fit, and from there, designed the architectures composed of owning entity, applicable financing mechanisms, and supporting contract types. So these are the preliminary architectures, three architectures for community-scale energy systems and neighborhood retrofits were conceptualized, and two for clean and active transportation systems. These architectures are defined first by the project type, then by ownership structure, and are composed of financing vehicles and supporting contract types, the latter two aren't on the slide. So for neighborhood retrofits, we designed an ESCO private partner architecture, municipal architecture, which is relatively well-understood, but does have its limitations, as well as a CEDF architecture, which would contribute to one of the outcomes in our Smart Cities Challenge, that's Outcome Five, which is dividends to the residents. Community-scale energy systems similarly had three architectures, we spoke about the utility architecture a little bit at the beginning of this presentation, it's not real, it's not that well-understood, so we'll see that we are suggesting we bring this to, to the next phase, and private, private and CEDF architectures as well. Finally, for clean and active transportation, we have two, the municipal and private architectures, and both are relatively well-understood. Which brings us to the three that are, we are recommending for Phase Two of this work. So there, these are the three stacks with an underlying cornerstone mechanisms that are key to a successful capitalization strategy, but require further study, so we're recommending that these proceed to Phase Two of, of this work. The first is a, a energy service company stack, which is a private partner in, in essence. The ESCO, or, or energy service company would incur the risk, it has off-book financing through energy savings, there's a strong ESCO presence in, in Canada, and early conversations with, with ESCO, potential ESCO opponents show that there is interest in the scope and, and the work that we're doing here in Bridgewater, which is very reassuring. A CEDF stack, so the Community Economic Development Investment Fund, there's a history of this type of community investment in Nova Scotia, it has a, an excellent tax benefits, returns are kept local, and tends to generate the, the local economy. And then finally, there's the municipal utility stack, and we spoke about the possible benefits of municipal utility earlier on, so I just won't repeat myself there, but it is something that we are considering. Which brings us to the recommendations, so staff rec... So staff recommends that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater direct staff to proceed to Phase Two of this project using the following financing structures: an ESCO, a CEDF, and a municipal utility. Which would then, and then just going forward to the next steps, Phase Two Detailed Operational Study, the activities and deliverables, it's broken down. So the first activity is bring Phase One to council. We had a discussion session last Monday, and now it's brought into council for approval of this recommendation, for feedback. Next, we would issue an RFP to procure a qualified proponent. And obviously, we would assist the proponent with a detailed operational study to make sure that the study is in line with the town's needs. And finally, stakeholder engagement, we would continue that to strengthen our networks and maintain community interest throughout this project.
Thank you, Greg. Questions from members of council before we put the motion on the floor?
There's a lot there.
There is a lot there. We discuss energy a lot around this council table. Someone want to make a motion, and then we can discuss it? Counselor McDonald?
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater direct staff to proceed to Phase Two of the Energy Finance and Ownership Structures Detailed Operational Study using the following financial structures as the basis for the study: one, energy service company; two, community economic development investment fund; and three, municipal utility.
Can I have a second, please? Counselor Thorburn, discussion?
It's an exciting project, and you have to pay for it.
Yep, and this is the path we're, I mean, we are moving forward. This is, our community has been quite vocal, I would say, in their support for this project. This moves this to the next step.
And it is funded by grants that we received as well, so...
Yes, it's fully funded at this point.
Yeah, so that was, next thing I was going to say, we're not expending any new money here. We receive money to move this project forward.
Yes.
We've been very public and open about where we're headed. And I was just doing some work on our Smart Cities Challenge submission, the video today. And one of the things that I said, and it's true, is there's not very often that, when you're discussing a large-scale project in a community, that you don't have negative pushback or pushback from your taxpayers. And I would say that this is one of the few projects that I've ever heard of where we don't have, you know, for something this big, to not have people banging on the door or pushing back or wondering what we're doing. I mean, to me, it's the right path forward for the community, but we've also communicated it in the right way so that they understand, may not understand the intricacies of it, but they understand our goal and what we're trying to do. So that goes back to previous councils, like, it's just been, it's been well-done for years. And so this is just the next step. So the motion is on the floor. Any further discussion? Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, great presentation. Next item in your agenda is Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program. It's their January 2019, and the January monthly report, and then the annual report is in there. It's just something we should be highlighting every month, the number of seniors that use this program. And always, the number of new referrals that sticks out every month is the one that gets me, because that number never goes down. So it's a vital program in our community. Any questions?
And even the number of home visits, it takes time to visit those people. It just doesn't, it's not a five-minute...
This covers Lunenburg and Queen's County.
No, it's just Lunenburg.
Lunenburg, yeah, it's Town of Lunenburg, Town of Mahone Bay, MoDL, Town of Bridgewater, District of Chester. But that's a large geographic area.
Huge.
Yeah, so, and I would encourage members of the public to, you can download the report and you can read it. To me, it's something that, there's a place for people in the community. If you're looking to volunteer, looking to help, this goes hand-in-hand with things like the Plow Forward Program and other things like that. So especially when we talk about storms coming up, people should be checking on their neighbors and their friends, and especially seniors. So if you have any questions, reach out to Senior Safety Coordinator. Next item is receipt of a grant request. So we've had a grant request from the Gary L. Wentzel March Break Hockey Tournament. As people know, we don't have any grant money left. The grant pool was depleted, and so council now has to make a decision on what to do with this grant request. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
So this is a phenomenal event. You know, it's a great event that fits perfectly with the facility that we built. It's probably the reason that we built that facility, to encourage these big events to come into town for short economic impact, a big economic impact, and then out they go again, and it's great. I do think that we should refer this to the LCLC Board, given that we've got two partners in that facility, and that's, I think, should be dealt with at the LCLC Board level as a donation of ice time.
Is that a motion? I would second if it is, because that's what's my thought.
Yeah, would you like to make that a motion? We can discuss that one?
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater refer this request for $2,000 worth of sponsorship to the LCLC Board for discussion at that Board meeting, which is in another couple of days, is that right?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, or plenty of time to, before the tournament.
Thank you. You're seconding that? Thank you. Discussion?
Great idea.
Yeah, that's...
It's where it belongs.
It's where it belongs.
But just a comment, he's asking for $2,000. There's 60 teams, it works out to about $35 a team, or about $1.50 per player. And what he's stating here is we always try to keep the cost of alternatives attractive for teams. You know, I mean, $2,000 really is going to do nothing to help the teams. Just pointing that out.
Yeah, this is just one single request. There's numerous requests going up for support, which will overall decrease the...
I see your point. It's not this $2,000, so it's all the $2,000 requests that go out. But I do, I do like referring it to the LCLC Board, and I think that with the new structure of the board, where the two municipal units are in more direct control of the facility, I think it's exactly the right mechanism for these decisions.
Because I suspect they got the same request.
Yeah, I think they normally do.
Yeah, so now we have to give $4,000 of us.
But in their, in their request, it only mentions Lunenburg and Queen's, so maybe, maybe they consider Lunenburg, the Town of Lunenburg, and the District of Lunenburg, or, I don't know.
We did ask for the breakdown in terms of where the requests have gone in terms of municipal units. And unfortunately, we weren't provided with that information, but there's $4,000 in sponsorship money that they're looking for, and this is a $2,000. I suspect it is with a neighboring unit.
Yeah, but we will find out.
We'll find out.
Question? Questions being called? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Tanner.
Yeah, next item is the RFP 2018-13 External Audit Services. So I know that some members of council have questions just due to the recommendation. So I'm just wondering, the best way to perhaps go over that?
The recommendation is to award, and obviously, as noted in the report, it's not necessarily to the lowest bid, it's a proposal call. So with a proposal call, you look at more than just price. And we did have criteria well-established within our proposal call that said price would be 30%, but there would be other criteria that we'd be looking at as well. We do have the detailed scoring sheets and good rationale for the recommendation, but I would suggest that because we'd be getting into the details and evaluation of businesses, that we probably would want to have that discussion in camera. And we could do that, if you want to defer to there and see the detail to understand better. Based on the scoring, Grant Thornton was the firm that came out. Three individuals scored them independently, and then those three scores were added together and averaged. But independently, all three scored Grant Thornton the highest in terms of all the criteria that had to be considered in the review.
So I guess what I'm going to do is I'm going to open the floor to some questions. People have questions, and we need more answers down the road, then we'll defer this to the next council meeting.
I personally like to see it deferred.
Okay? No?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I would still move.
Sorry, yeah, with not fully understanding how the scoring system works, I think that would be appropriate to have that information.
Okay, so if we can just defer this to the, we don't need a motion to defer that, right? We just defer it to the next council meeting, just so we, yeah, council needs to understand exactly how it was scored and the rationale, so thank you for that. Next item is solid waste contract. So there's a recommendation to award this to GE Environmental. There is a big change for our town in this contract, and that would be the addition of weekly summer organic waste collection from July 1st to September 15th.
And some other stuff.
And some other stuff. I know that's the big, that's a big one for our community, especially in the summer. I know Mahone Bay has enjoyed that for quite some time, while they pay for it. But I know last year in particular, as the summers get hotter, the smell seems to get worse and worse, and so not having to wait two weeks is a big plus.
I would just point out to council that with what's the recommendation that you have before you, and based on the presentation that Sue gave to us at our discussion session last week, if the recommendation that's before you is approved, you would see the spring and fall cleanup eliminated. And instead, we'd go to a bi-weekly bulky waste collection. So we'd have to do some by-line amendments and put some parameters and definitions around what's bulky waste and how much can you put out at the curb every second week. And we would still have to do a wood and metal cleanup every fall. So the big change to our residents and the thing that we'd have to communicate in addition to the enhancement in our service level with the summer organic weekly collection is the fact that there wouldn't be the big fall and spring cleanups anymore. We'd be spreading that out with bi-weekly bulky collection.
But the electronic collection will help a lot of people. Also, the green bin sizes, there's three sizes for green bins, and that'll help a lot of people.
Yeah, because the electronic just once a year.
Yes, it is an annual electronic waste collection, yeah, and at the curb.
Counselor Thorburn?
So from September the 16th till June the 17th, we'd only have garbage collection in town once every two weeks instead of every week the way we have it now?
No, no, that would be the, from September to June?
Yeah.
It says every two weeks. We go back to our regular schedule.
Go back to your regular schedule, and then you would go, green cart would be weekly from that June to September.
To June to September, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions? Ready for a motion?
The big thing that we should be highlighting is the fact that it's to reduce costs.
Yes. I was, see, I was waiting. I thought that was, I'm like, well, Counselor McGinnis is going to bring that up.
Well, I thought, I thought the Deputy Mayor might, but...
No, he just made that other great motion. Now it's someone else's turn to highlight something great.
That's important. That's a very significant feature of this contract.
Yes, reduce costs is always a winner. Yes, Counselor Thorburn, please?
Yeah, I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve and award collection contract, RFP 2018-005, Part Five to GE Environmental, including the following new collection services: bi-weekly bulky waste collection service with the normal, with the annual wood and metal collection in the fall; annual curbside electronic waste collection, green card administration, and weekly summer organic waste collection from July 1st to September the 15th.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please, Deputy Mayor Tanner? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item is the Third Quarter Report. And what I didn't see here at the beginning of the meeting, I thought, it's a good report, so I don't... Good scared you off already.
I was just...
No, so we'll turn it over to our Director of Finance.
So we have before you the Third Quarter Report. At this point, we're projecting a somewhat slim surplus, but a surplus nonetheless. Of course, much can change between now and the end of the year. For example, we're projecting a surplus in snow removal, so we're really hoping we don't get dumped on in the next month and a half. Been a good winter so far. There are a number of pluses and minuses, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think everything's in the report.
I'm sure members of council have questions.
No, I'm good. I think it's excellent. The only question I might have is, it looks like we're going to be over budget on some of the capital as it's projected right now, about $144,000. If we have a surplus in operating, can that be applied to that deficit?
Surplus, with a motion of counsel, it could be. Normally, what happens is that the Municipal Affairs requires that any surplus goes into an operating reserve at year-end. So, you know, we could do something to increase capital from operating this year and incorporate that into year-end, or we could just let it flow through into reserve and then fund some capital out of that reserve.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Thorburn?
The one that hit me hard the other week was when I got my power bill. And I know the town uses a lot of energy, and I just wondered how much the energy costs are going to go up with the new, the structure fee that they have in place.
Yeah, with the carbon tax, yeah.
I had, I got two bills, and not good.
Really, mind your own down.
The biggest electricity cost we have actually is for streetlights. And that, it's my understanding that that's frozen for a number of years. Yeah, but all the others, we do have significant electricity costs. And there are actually a couple of areas where electricity costs are over budget, expected to be over budget this year.
Reach up? Any other questions? So we do jokingly say it would be nice if we don't get a big snowfall, but we do, we do know we're getting snow, so the budget does include snow removal. It's just we save a lot of money every time the forecast says snow and it never snows.
Yeah, and we're projecting a surplus right now, but if it all went sideways, we do also have $125,000 in a snow reserve. So if it really went sideways, we have money tucked away for that.
It's going to have to go in a paving reserve, because this weather is tearing apart our roads. And I'm not going to get on a soapbox now and give my speech on roads and how we pay for our roads and rural roads. Look at me, I'm on my soapbox saying we paid twice for roads.
Does that mean I can't?
No, it's coming up. Look for it in this edition of the bridge that's coming out when I do my thing on potholes. But I think, you know, it's great to have no snow, but I think it's important for people to remember that when the temperature is plus 10, then minus 10, and it rains, and it gets in the cracks, and then at night it freezes, it blows these roads apart. Combine that with the fact that 22,600 cars from outside of town each and every day come into town, and our roads are getting beaten down. And so it happens, right? Roads, roads get beaten down. And it would be, I think, a worse problem if we had such little traffic, because nobody was coming to town, that our roads didn't have anywhere to turn it. I would rather be a busy town that has to deal with road maintenance than a dying town that can't figure out how to get people to come to it. But we're not alone. One need only go to, you know, name a town, and they're having an issue. And we'll talk more about that over the next year and a half on roads. But I smile when I hear we don't have to plow the road, and then I just think, well, we kind of need that protective layer of snow over these roads so that they're not getting beaten up, but... Yes?
On items like sidewalk maintenance, where it looks like we couldn't find the people, the resources to actually do the work, do you know if engineers ever considered just contracting that out to get some of the sidewalks repaired and using that money?
I don't know the answer to that. That's something I'll ask Larry and...
I mean, there are some sidewalk areas that could probably use a fair amount of work and are needed to be worked on. Shame we can't find people to work in those jobs.
No? Yeah. Any other questions? No? Okay. Our next item is new part-time position, Community Events Coordinator. Did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, this is just a quick, for your information, report. So this isn't any new money or anything like that. It's just merely the merging of existing positions that we have into one. That would be about 600 hours over the course of each 12 months, so a little bit more stable in terms of its term. So what we'd be doing is combining the Canada Day on the La Haye position that you created in 2018, and the Summer Events Coordinator position that you created as well, which is about 15 weeks. And be taking those two positions and putting them together. And that position would support Canada Day on the La Haye, events like the music along the Riverbank, as well as work on other community events that are happening within... events that are happening within, within the town where staff resources have gone to support. So it's just providing that stable position to support these. And often the planning happens before these positions were traditionally in place before, too. So this will provide that support, so that we have the resources to help with the planning on the event, too, while in advance of, of the event actually happening. It's here for information. As I say, it's not adding, it's just, you might see the ad, and you wonder what that's about. It's not a new, it's not a new person.
Counsel Graves?
Does it also include Christmas on La Haye?
That would be one of the events that, yeah.
Not mentioned. It's a premier event.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Tam, we have to see, foresee committees accessing this person, like first come, first served, or through you?
No. It would be through Patrick.
Through Patrick.
Oh.
Patrick. And, yeah. And so this person would support also the events that are hap- the museum's going to be more active in event planning with, with the museum 2.0. And so this person would work with Patrick and Lynette. And so Canada on La Haye committee would access through Patrick to see what resources would be available to support.
Any questions on that? And while we're talking about Patrick, because he's here, we should thank Patrick for all his work on the Bridgewater birthday celebrations that are going on, as well as for those who are watching on our live Facebook stream. That's Patrick that handles all that and live tweets it out. And I hear from quite a few people on a regular basis, usually from other municipalities, who are very appreciative of how much communication from these meetings goes out in real time. And I know that even tonight, someone was messaging, asking us all to speak up into the microphone. So people are watching, and people are tuning in. So as people turn away from government, I think it's important that government try to remind them that we're here and get them engaged. So, and thank you all for that. Any, anything else from members of council? Hearing none. Motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
Counsel Grace, Counsel Thorburn, we are adjourned. Thank you.